The way I'd like to handle this is we're gonna get, you know, in a minute, we're gonna get the final thoughts, then get into a discussion as a board. And I mean that as a board because there are people out there that think that President Barry gets together with Superintendent Malaico and they make these decisions. I can assure you that can't be any furthest from the truth. We have a team here, seven board members, six of my colleagues. We're all independent thinkers. We all have different direction that, you know, we wanna go. But at the end of the day, we're gonna discuss it today and, you know, move forward. I can assure you that. It's not, it's, you know, if we as a board were working for just the teachers, decisions would be easy. If we were working just for the parents or community members, decision would be a little bit easier. But we have to take into consideration that we are responsible for 20,00300 students plus many, many teachers. It's not just, when we say staff, we don't mean just the teachers. We love our teachers, but also we love our, you know, our lunchroom ladies. We love our secretaries that do a lot of the work in the buildings, you know, custodians, you know. Custodian has been like a quiet group, just been doing what they've been doing for since March, since we got into this. They didn't take days off. Matter of fact, we were bringing them extra days and so thank you to everybody. What I'd like to do before we enter discussion is I got a couple of questions for Dr. Malaico. So if we decide we don't wanna keep the status quo and go in, go in direction of slowly, like I personally, you know what? First of all, thank you very much for all the comments. I came in here thinking certain direction, but listening to our speakers today, listening to, you know, Secretary Lane read all these comments, I actually printed some of the emails. And speaking of emails, yes, we all received, I would say, over 100 emails. The usual protocol is my colleagues would send the emails to the chair, I would share them with Dr. Malaico, and nine out of 10 times, he would be answering the question or I would answer the question on behalf of, behalf of the board. But I know we were all overwhelmed, so I thank my colleagues for, you know, stepping in. I did not answer many emails, but I can guarantee you that we all read them and they're gonna be part of our discussion, part of our thinking, part of our decision-making process. I did print a couple of them, I was gonna read them, but all the comments were pretty much addressed already, so just move forward. Dr. Malaico, we make a decision tonight because by law we have to, right? We have to kind, we have to put it out there. What are our plans for November, you know, moving forward? If we make a decision and things change next couple of weeks, if we do meet here two weeks from tonight, I would imagine there'll be, we would be okay putting the brakes on our plan.
Sure.
If we had so, so this. So now, that being said, I'm gonna put it out there to my colleagues. I would like, I would like to add a second meeting to the month of October and November, and those meetings would take place on the fourth Monday of those two months I just mentioned. Again, I'm gonna retain a motion to add a second meeting to the month of October of 2020 and November of 2020, and those meetings would take place on the fourth Monday of the month. And my thought process is this, we're probably gonna need the second meeting in November more than, you know, the one in October unless, unless the numbers start, you know, continue going that they've been the last couple of days. You know, obviously, we all wish that, you know, go back to they were last, last week. That would be our, you know, our open wish. But if, at this point, I will retain a motion to what I just put out. If we don't get a motion and support, then, you know, we don't do that, so.
Question?
Yes. Dr. Mead, yes?
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Are we making a decision tonight or is this an information meeting?
No, no, no. By law, Dr. Mead, by law, we have to either keep the status quo.
Yeah.
You know, just stay online, just exactly what we've been doing it. Or we have some recommendations here that we, we'll get into discussion. All I'm doing right now, yeah, so the answer to your question is yes, we have to make a decision, one way or the other. But all I'm doing right now is I'm seeing if there's an appetite by this board to come back two weeks from now and again, the fourth Monday of November, to continue the discussion. So we're not here for four or five hours, we can kind of bust up the meetings, reports, because there's some other reports that we probably wanna hear.
I support the motion.
So I'm just retaining motions. So we have a motion by Trustee Pechikov. Is there support for the motion?
Support.
We have support.
Support.
By Trustee McDonald.
Question?
Okay. We'll go into discussion and questions. Yes, sir, Dr. Mead.
What is the purpose of the next meetings? That you're, what's the purpose of this?
The discussion was earlier, if we make a decision, you know, if we, if we decide to keep the status quo, we can always cancel the meeting in October, the second one. That would be easy. But if we decide to slowly follow one of these options and things, you know, go in the wrong direction, the next, you know, couple of days, couple, you know, maybe a week or two, because we're not gonna say, okay, we're gonna go with Plan A, B, C, and it's gonna start in two weeks. The idea is instead of scheduling an emergency meeting, at that point, you already have a meeting and we will be getting reports from Dr. Malaico, and we'll either, you know, continue with what we decided tonight or make some changes.
So it would be strictly, the agenda would be just strictly to attend to the reopening?
Unless, unless there's business to be taken care of.
Unless we have some other business that could be, yeah.
I mean, for the longest time, we used to have two meetings a month.
We used to? I was on the board.
We got away from it, that's okay. I'm not, I don't wanna bring it back. All I'm saying is, you know, it was brought to my attention that maybe, you know, I know we have the small group meetings and, you know, we kinda went away from those, but bring this group back together to continue this discussion. Hey, how do the numbers look? They still were there, you know, they were a couple of weeks ago, were fine, and there's a couple of reports that Dr. Malaico and I discussed that we wanna bring in. There was no way I was gonna add, you know, three, four reports during a meeting like this.
Oh, yeah.
No, I was saying, Trustee Pechikov asked for a report too.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's, there's reports. We're way behind on that. I mean, there's information that we're gonna need, you know, how, you know, I, one other question is, one other report I wanted to see, how's it going in Virtual Academy? What do the grades look like? I'm, you know, I wanna see numbers, what have you.
Well, we've got a motion on the table.
There will be reports, there would be, if we have an opportunity, I'm sure if we wanna pay some bills, it will be on the agenda.
Yep.
Trustee Thorpe.
I'd have the same type of question as Trustee Mead. What would the purpose be? From our discussion so far, we seem to be going along the lines of we'd wanna have a two-week lead up to a start, but we could stop at any time. Does the board need to act to stop and to switch back to online?
I would like to see the board involved in that decision. I don't wanna keep it. What we did last month, and I'll go ahead and put it out there, is we said, you know, we're gonna hold, put a hold on the learning labs, but if the positivity rate drops below five, then we'll come back on, and we saw how that took place. I wanna get a definite direction from the board, so there is no pointing fingers, what have you. We're making this decision, we're gonna own this decision. I don't want any changes after we leave this meeting. If, to answer your question, is yes, if we have to put the brakes or make minor changes or do something, I would like the board to make that decision. That's why I'm going that direction. Trustee, go ahead.
That's, sorry. Thinking through the dates, and we're gonna get to the point where we make a decision, but if the idea is that a decision we're making is gonna take effect on the 26th, which is the next day that we're scheduled to meet, what's gonna be different on the 26th? That could've been the first day back.
It's not definite that we're gonna be, it's not definite it's gonna be the 26th.
I know, but, but I'm just looking at it, if, if we were talking then about us meeting roughly every two weeks for the next couple of months, and we're doing a two-week lead time, I don't know. I think that if, if we need to hit the brakes on something, it's gonna need to be in an emergency session if it's us in front of everyone making that decision. I don't think it's going to be on a cer, a set schedule.
Sure. You're not wrong about the October meeting, and if we have to, you know, amend the motion, I would be okay with it. Most important is gonna be that second meeting in November, because we're gonna have the students in the classrooms, in the buildings, you know, about the same time we're gonna have that first meeting. I wanna report, what's going on? Let's look at the, you know, let's have the discussion.
If we need to get caught up with other reports and things, I can understand that one. I'm just thinking that from the, from the pandemic and, and bringing kids back.
We could call a special meeting at any moment that we need to.
Right.
Call for a special meeting.
Okay. I mean, reports, we're okay with that? We hold off on reports?
Well, no, I mean, if anything, it's the 26th, so we can get caught up on some reports, and it could be that same idea in November. We'll have a chance to perhaps have more information as to how in-person learning has been going.
Sure.
At our November meeting.
Sure.
But again, it's just the, the what is the purpose of those meetings? So then we're defining it in that respect.
Okay, yeah, that's.
I believe the decision that we're gonna make today will determine if we will need a meeting in October and in November. So depends on what direction we'll go, then will determine if we need to meet.
Okay, so.
At the end of October and at the end of November.
We can, we can, I mean, there's a motion in, who's, who, who moved the motion?
I moved the motion, Roxanne.
Would you be okay if we put it as number 15 on action items?
Yeah, I'd, I.
Because then we can put it if we want, depending, Trustee Mosib is 100% correct on this. It depends on what we decide to do.
Yeah.
If we're gonna need those meetings or not. If we decide to, hey, if we decide we're gonna keep the status quo, I guess we definitely don't need them.
Not necessarily, because we could, we could say stay virtual right now, but in two weeks, come back and decide, all right, now it's time to move forward.
Okay, so.
But it might be, I don't know.
Do you wanna call the question to order, or are you okay putting it in as, I would, I would imagine as action item number 15?
Yeah, I don't even have the.
Yeah, it's action item number 15.
Yeah.
It would be 15.
Then we can add it to the agenda.
Yeah, so who, who supported it?
Roxanne.
Roxanne.
Trustee McDonald, are you okay with that? Okay, so let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and open up the discussion, and I'm gonna have, because I got, just, just for the record, Dr. Mead, Trustee Lane, and Trustee McDonald, when I'm facing the audience, I got my back to you, I can't see you on the screen, that's why I got Jim trying to help out here. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Trustee Thorpe. So let's go ahead, let's get into discussion. What are, what are our final thoughts and what direction do we think, you know, what would we be support? So why don't I go in order with a roll call? Trustee Lane, start off with Trustee Lane, please.
My thoughts are that I'm in favor of having a second meeting, because it provides us with a lot quicker feedback loop, and I think that I feel more comfortable with more information. I don't feel I really have a good bead drawn on what's going on in the learning labs. It's too short of a time, but I also wanna say this, we haven't even talked about what effect starting and stopping will have. That may have another effect. That could have a serious detrimental effect. We don't know. We haven't even talked about that. All we've talked about for the last couple of months is reopening, but what about reopening and closing? Reopening and closing? What's going on with other situations where that's happening? And we can, we can get information from other districts by finding, by pushing out our decision a little bit. Our decision has been, because we have a highly impacted community, to go slow, and I think that's wise. Lastly, I would just say this, the people whose comments were just read were really thoughtful. I mean, some of them had great information to us. Their insight into actual situations, their own situations, was really moving. And I was moved right from the beginning by the young man, Mr. Hetrick, who spoke very eloquently about his desire to go back in person, how what he wanted was to have his learning pushed out. But throughout the whole comment section, when he said, I want this, I want that, I said to myself, Mr. Hetrick, I want you never experience what I experienced as a ninth grader when I went to the funeral of a friend of mine who died tragically in an accident. I don't want anyone to have to go to a student or staff funeral. That's pushing all of my decision-making. Now, I know that I'm probably, I react more strongly than a lot of people. A lot of things haven't worn out, and we've been safe so far. The gentleman who spoke about the 179 days, that was very moving. So that's where my thinking is, and I, I will, I know we will get to a place where we all make the decision in comfort that we can go back. I have no intention to separate staff or to deprive students or families, but neither do I ever want to see anyone have to attend an unnecessary funeral or to have someone have permanent physical or mental damage. And, and I am weighing both the lack of socialization and the, the reality of learning loss that we all, as a world, are experiencing. So I'm in favor of having more information. I think that's our best decision, and I am in favor of having more conversation, although we obviously, none of us really want more meetings, but that's my feeling.
Great. Thank you very much, Trustee Lane. Trustee McDonald. You're muted, Trustee.
You're muted.
I'm sorry, apologize. A lot of my thoughts are similar to Trustee Lane's. I am very concerned that this is October. We really haven't even began to hit flu season yet, and the flu season on top of COVID could be, you know, something we can't even imagine. And the last thing we need to do is have, have a situation where we are responsible for the illness and the long-term illness and possibly the deaths of folks that are in, under our charge. Also, if you look at the national daily rates, those have been increasing. We were at about 40,000 daily rates nationally for a long time, which is way too high a bar to begin with. And I looked this weekend, we just had a day where it was like 54,000. That's, it's way too high. And I know Michigan's been doing fairly well as compared to a lot of the nation, but this disease just can explode, and it explodes exponentially when you're not looking. So I think we need to be on guard. And again, like Trustee Lane said, I think the starts and stops are detrimental too. I think it's important to move very slowly to get some more information. I think it might be beneficial to open learning labs up a little more, because there are students out there that are really struggling. Identify that, those students and give them the opportunities. Identify the students that are really, you know, having trouble and, and help them, but at this point, I don't think moving an entire group of students online, I don't think that's beneficial at this point. I think we need to slow and be data-driven as we go along.
Good. Thank you, Trustee McDonald. Trustee Dr. Mead, your thoughts, please.
Hi. Hello, everybody. You having a really good time tonight? I, I favor status quo. I favor continuing the learning lab. I'm very concerned about the zeitgeist across the country of lack of concern about the pandemic. Basically, in our Dearborn community, we're also very much into not recognizing the pandemic, pandemic as we should. I think that bringing the children into school is too dangerous for them and for the teachers and staff. I think we need more time with the learning lab, and I agree with Trustee McDonald that we could possibly expand that, because there are students that are behind, and see if we can get some data that would give us freedom and quietude that we are putting the children and faculty in a situation where they are safe. I think parents across the country are concerned, number one, with safe. We heard all these people talk tonight, and the predominance is, don't put my child in an unsafe situation, and don't put our teachers and staff in that same situation. Opening up gradually with children, I think, is asking for a lot of sickness. So I would prefer that we continue virtual learning, expansion of the learning lab, and gathering more data from across the country, and particularly in Dearborn, to see when it is that we feel that students can come in slowly and go along with the hybrid idea. But right now, I'm very uncomfortable with that.
I make a motion to extend the meeting 15 minutes.
Support.
We have a motion that's supported by Trustee Pechikov. I'll take the roll call for the secretary. Trustee Lane?
She muted.
You're muted.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes. She nodded.
Dr. Mead?
Yes?
Trustee Mosib?
Yes.
Trustee Pechikov?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Usain Barry, yes, meeting's extended, thank you. Do you wanna continue, Dr. Mead, or are you all set?
No. No, I'm fine.
Okay, we'll go to Trustee Mosib, please.
Yes, I, I believe parents are very frustrated with online learning. I'll put in my bias myself as a parent. I think it's, it's very detrimental also to a lot of students who are experiencing a lot of anxiety and frankly, as stated, academic loss. And President Barry, you mentioned this, that we have to make up this and sometimes in the future. At the same time, teachers are very worried about if we would to go back in class, so I'm, I'm honestly torn between the two options. And there is no politics in this decision. I, when I decided to run for office and I said, safety first, I'm still holding safety first. And considering Dearborn numbers are still definitely outliers, Trustee Pechikov, I'm not feeling comfortable returning in students, especially younger children, into the classroom. So I would like to see, however, an expansion of the learning labs. Perhaps we could start at a level even, or, or either one grade going into the school for each level. So we would have a grade in elementary, we would have a grade in middle, and a grade in high school, practicing all social distancing. But these really need to be studied, the numbers from the learning labs also need to be studied. But we have to do better as, as Dearborn, as far as the numbers. The numbers are still too high, and I would like to use the Dearborn number instead of the Wayne County number to determine if we would to go back in person. So again, I'm honestly torn between the two, but I would say let's do it gradual and let's do it where we're very clear. I don't, I don't want us to get into a situation where people are so confused. So we have to really present whatever dashboard that we need to put on the website where it says, this is the current number for Dearborn and this is the current number for out Wayne County. So those are my, my thoughts, and I'm, I'm really, really still worried about Dearborn numbers.
Thank you very much. Go to Trustee Pechikov.
Okay, I'm like everybody else. This, I've been struggling with this all week long. I've been looking at what other school districts and how they've done it and if they were successful or not nationwide, even worldwide. And there's so many disparate numbers and, and confusing, conflicting stories out there that we can't just go by the anecdotes of other communities and what they see. We have to be focused on what's going on here in our community strictly. And so I, A, won, I, I said this from the get-go when I saw the numbers in Dearborn, that I didn't wanna use just the Wayne County positivity rates, because I knew that something different was happening here in Dearborn. So that was one of my biggest concerns, number one. Number two, that we've got these competing interests. We have staff that has a great concern about going back into the buildings and their safety, and we can't guarantee this is a risk. We know it's a risk. We also have the start of a flu season. How are parents and, and staff gonna know, is it just a sniffle or is it the start of something more serious? And can we trust that they will be able to make the best judgment call? We know parents in the past and staff in the past have come in when they've been ill, because they didn't wanna miss something. So that is going to compound the problem of having people back into the buildings. I also feel that the hybrid programs are not gonna solve the one problem we hear repeatedly from the parents about they need to go back to work, and I get that, and they're overwhelmed and overworked at home. They weren't meant to be teachers, and they'll tell you they weren't meant to be teachers. They need our support, they need, they need some relief, but I'm not sure that the hybrid programs, especially some of the options we were looking at, would give them that anyhow. The, the scheduling could end up being very confusing for people to keep track of. They wouldn't get an all-day opportunity to go to work nine to five, because they would still have students coming and going at odd days, odd times, whatever. So it wouldn't be the relief they had hoped for. So, that being said, I, A, believe that we should probably maintain the status quo, and I would like to have another meeting in a couple of weeks. Then we would move into looking, we would hopefully have those numbers for Dearborn. Again, I wanna, I wanna have a better understanding of what numbers we wanna settle on. Do we wanna say if we can get the positivity rate for Dearborn, do we want that at a 5% or below? What is it that we're looking for, for our rubrics in order to determine that we're at a safe level of community spread to bring people back into the building? I, I believe the learning labs could probably be slowly, they have only been open, we haven't really given them an opportunity to get to that two-week period where we would start to see potential issues. So I would like to have the learning labs continued and possibly expanded. And I'm wondering if we could start to explore to help, give opportunities for those students such as Mr. Hetrick or for the parents who, who have to have some kind of help with their students that are in the general population, that I know we have some daycare kid club kind of opportunities going on. Some of the schools, if we could continue to look at if we could handle those programs in a wider cross-section of schools, for those parents who really, really either cannot handle working with their students from home. And the, and I know that we, we were having some setups where there was just like a monitor in, in the cafeterias or whatever, the student, they weren't teaching the students, they were just making sure they were set up to be in front of a screen. And could we, if we're allowing for sports at the high school level, can we have some kind of opportunity for students such as Mr. Hetrick to get together with a, you know, 10 or less of his students, like a club, that could get together and share, share what's going on and be able to have a face-to-face opportunity and maybe a teacher who would volunteer to be their sponsor? I, it's just something to consider so that we can start to give some opportunities but not be full force back into the buildings at the moment. So that's some of my thoughts.
Thank you for sharing. Trustee Thorpe?
Several points. The first is people talk about the rates, the rates of new cases, and to me, it doesn't matter what's happening at a national level. It doesn't necessarily matter to me what's happening at a state level, because I think there's just an outbreak happening in the U.P. And I'm not concerned about the U.P. I'm concerned about Dearborn and what's happening in Wayne County. As we get closer to home, that's where I care. We get closer to home, that's where I care more about it. And the positivity rate here in Outwayne County, outside Detroit, is low. It's as low as it's been in a couple of months. If we look at the matrix that's been put together by the State Health Department, that means that we could allow schools to go back in. But if there's spikes in cases in those buildings, then those buildings could close. We wouldn't have to have the whole district still be out. I believe the students would be better served being in person with their teachers. And people talk a lot about safety and risk. But I would ask this. When is it going to be safe enough for individuals? Is it going to be safe when a vaccine comes out? Not everyone's going to take the vaccine. Is it going to be safe when we've got an antibiotic then for it? You're talking way down the line for those things. There is going to be risk when we make the decision to put kids back in the buildings. Whether that happens in October or in November or in April, that risk will still be there. So when are you comfortable taking the risk? I am fine with having kids start to go back into the schools now. I am fine with a blended option and slowly bringing them back in because we won't find out if we don't start. And we might have learning labs, but we're taking this so incredibly slowly, Mr. Hetrick could be right, that the seniors aren't going to be coming back in until the end of the school year. And I don't think that's going to serve any of our students in the best way. The last thing that I'll add on is that we talked earlier about the survey that was sent out to parents. We got about a 30% response rate. Some people say that's good, some people say it's bad. Some will say that 70% didn't respond. If they didn't respond, they either didn't recognize it or they didn't think it was important enough to respond. So I'm going to say that that 30% is either strongly for or against. And 80% of the elementary said, "Go for it." The parents were willing to go with us. And the high school students were either 50, over 50% with limited social distancing or 75% with regular social distancing. So parents are telling us they're willing to trust us to get the kids back in school. That's my comments.
Thank you, sir. Okay. So what I'm hearing is we want to, Dr. Maleko, we want to expand on the learning labs. And there were some parents out there today that were scared to death that we were going to bring their students into the classroom. So why don't we open up, when we start having that discussion educating our parents that they maybe start expanding, we should start expanding on the Virtual Academy as, you know, slowly. So we don't have, so right now, if we have a, I guess we can have them apply. If there's room without changing, you know, too much, go ahead and approve it. Make that change right away. If we're going to make a different decision down the road, we'll deal with that. But I'm hearing from my colleagues, at this point, I will entertain a motion. When I entertain a motion, doesn't mean I'm putting a motion out there. I will entertain a motion, like Dr. Mead said, keep the status quo. What that means is we will continue with the Virtual Academy and keep the rest of our students online. I don't think, I think that's pretty clear. So it's a status quo that we will continue. I would really like to meet two weeks from now and hopefully...
We have to extend the time again.
Okay.
Motion to extend the time.
We have a motion to extend the meeting another 15 minutes?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion that's supported. I'll do the quick roll call vote. Trustee Lane?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Dr. Mead?
Yes.
Trustee Mosib?
Yes.
Trustee Petchikoff?
Yeah.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Berry, yes. So I'll just continue what I was saying. I will entertain a motion to keep the status quo, meaning that we're going to keep, unless, you know, unless you're there in the Virtual Academy or keep the rest of the students online. And can we have that, will anybody?
With learning labs, right?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Just add "with" learning labs, right?
Yes.
Expanding.
Expanding learning labs, start looking into the Virtual Academy. Because I can hear it, I can sense it. Some of our parents are like, "That's not what you told us at the beginning of the year." Forget what happened at the beginning of the year. Moving forward, I think it sounds like, you know, we heard some comments about maybe they didn't understand or wasn't explained right, or maybe they were... I don't even go with what some of the comments said, I'm not going to say it. But yeah, expand on that. So do we have that motion?
I think that, Dr. Mead, is...
Do you want me to make the motion?
Yeah, that's what I mean, but I entertain a motion, to say so moved.
All right. Dearborn Public Schools will continue with virtual learning and the learning lab program until the data proves that offering the school, that opening the schools will only happen when it is safe as determined by science.
We have a motion on the table?
We have to have support. Nobody wants the support.
Not with the way it was spoken.
Yeah.
Not me.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion that's supported by trustee Lane. Just to be clear, I'm going to go ahead and throw the words out there. Status quo. So unless our students are in the Virtual Academy, they're going to continue online until we make a different decision, two weeks from now or a month from now. So we have a motion that's supported. We'll go into discussion right now. Trustee McDonald?
Yeah, I'm concerned with the way that the motion was stated because, only because I think we should continue with the status quo, expand the learning labs, but not put any kind of date on it. Say, until the next meeting, until the next board meeting scheduled, something like that, instead of until the science is determinative.
All we're doing is, we're going to report to the state what we're going to do the next 30 days. So we're keeping the status quo.
Well, we have to make sure that the motion is worded appropriately.
I think Joanne is with us. I'm sure she heard trustee McDonald, so yeah, we agree with that. So anybody, trustee Thorpe?
I know every month we have to approve what we're going to do for the following month.
Yeah.
So if we're meeting on October 26th, we can, we could change, in theory, what we're talking about today.
Right.
Hundred percent.
Just want to make sure that we're all clear on that.
Okay, no, of course. Trustee Mosib?
Are we still meeting then on October 26th?
We will decide that with the next part of our meeting. There is a motion, you know, there was an action item that was added, which would be action item number 15. If somebody wants to pull it or if you want to keep it, you know, we'll see. Trustee Petchikoff?
I have a question for Dr. Maleko. If we were to then change it in two weeks and decide we are going to now move to another phase, would that start the clock again for 30 days?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
You have to do it within 30 days, every day.
Every time we make a decision on what we're doing.
Yeah.
Anything else from Zoom Lane?
We're still giving out those two weeks' notice.
I'm sorry?
Are we still giving out the two-week notice? So if we were to meet on the 26th and decide on an in-person?
Yes.
We would still have to, yes.
We would still get a notice.
But that's within our purview to change, too.
I just wanted to make that clear. That's going to happen.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there any other discussion? We have a motion that's been supported. Secretary Lane, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Lane, yes. McDonald?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Mosib?
Yes.
Petchikoff?
Yes.
Thorpe?
No.
Berry?
Yes. The motion carries with a 6-1 vote. Thank you very much. A lot of work went into this. You know, I want to again, thank the committee. This is, I know there's a lot of work into this. I know I came in here, I had discussions with some of my colleagues earlier today. I came in here with a thought that direction we would be going. But again, no decisions were made until we got to the table. I can guarantee you that because where I was kind of trished over after hearing, you know, our parents talk and hearing my colleagues' discussions. So thank you very much. Madam Secretary, can we get to the next item, please?
Yes, may I add one thing on the last issue, though?
Please.
Dr. Maleko, can we, I anticipate some kind of a report on October 26th as to how the learning labs are doing, what problems we're experiencing, if any, or successes. If it seems like everyone is complying, I expect that we'll have a presentation then. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yeah, sure, we can do that. I'll talk to President Berry and then, just so you're aware, our committee meets every Friday, too. So we're getting, and right now, we only opened it up for up to three students in the class. We're doing that again this week. And then after that, we were looking at going up to the six. So that would help open it up. The only other way to open it up would be you'd have to have more days. So we'll discuss that with the committee and figure out how we can do that. So we'll definitely have a report available. And the initial week was that things were going pretty well. We had some things that we had to work out with some of the cleaning. But we did, we worked it out. And the unions, all the unions are very supportive, helping with that. So we're happy with how things have gone so far.
Good.
But again, it just started, so.
It just started, yeah. And I think that's where our hesitancy is with.
Two weeks from now, we will have some data.
Better date, yeah.
Dr. Mead?
Oh, you're okay.
May I request that we get data on hospitalizations for the Dearborn residents, if that's at all possible?
Sure.
The other data is helpful, but what really tells us if we have a serious problem is the hospitalizations. So I don't know if that's possible, but I think that that data would be very...
It's been included.
Okay. Hospitalizations included?
It is included.
Okay.
Oh, we didn't talk about it tonight, so I thought maybe it wasn't, okay.
Okay, anything else? Okay, now we could, trustee McDonald?
No.
Just along with the information that we're going to be, the presentation that we're going to be given on learning labs, part of it, I want to know which students are involved, how they're decided. If, like the one parent that said they've been trying to get their student into a learning lab, how come they're not able to do that? I just want to make sure the students that need it are able to get it.
Thank you. Okay, now we can move on, Madam Secretary.
Next item is our action items. Are there any agenda items on this agenda? Which board members and the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we'll exclude these from the motion below.
Do we need to pull 15? Mary?
Pardon?
Do we need to pull 15?
No. Keep it at...
Okay, no, do you need to pull to vote on it?
Oh, no, no.
You can put it together, yeah.
Yeah.
It's almost midnight.
Because we're going to be a roll call vote.
Almost midnight, yeah, I forgot that part, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, but just remember, there is 15.
I guess we're not...
I'd like to ask your five and number three.
Just questions, five and three? Okay. All right.
Okay. Okay, that action items numbered one through 15 with supplements be approved as recommended in this agenda.
So moved. So far.
So moved.
So we have a motion that's moved by trustee Petchikoff, supported by trustee Mosib. Okay, let's go to trustee Lane. We'll start with number three. You had a question?
Number three, yes, I read the agreement with the Windot schools. My concern is this, and it's obviously probably never going to happen, but the proviso for an expulsion or disciplinary action against any student that violates the Windot code is that some, a Windot administrator would be solely responsible for permanent removal of one of our students. I think that's a little bit, I'm concerned that there are no, there's no consultation with Dearborn, there's no consideration. I mean, or if they can permanently remove a Dearborn student, maybe they could do that from their school system. But I think that the decision to permanently remove a Dearborn student should remain with the Dearborn Board. We understand our students better. We have the best interest of our students. And not that there's anything to say that Windot wouldn't be fair, but I would just like to, at least at a minimum, have consultation with Dearborn administrators, if not with the Dearborn Board.
Trustee Lane, great point there. I could tell you that typically with all the directors, the relationship we have is pretty collaborative. And with all our students, they'd always be offered, you know, specific due processes. And they'd always be our student regardless at the end of the day. So I'm pretty sure that before a decision is made like that, that they would bring Dearborn in and we would have a discussion based on whatever the, whatever it is that the student did at that specific time. However, it is just part of the cooperative agreement. And just like we would typically write those in our cooperative agreements for students that we would be servicing outside of the district, they would write that as well, more so just a protection for them.
I would add, too, that we have a very collaborative environment with the county superintendents. So that kind of sets the tone. And then that's why the different groups, like the executive directors and special ed, we kind of set the tone. I know the superintendent well, and we work together. We just had a meeting last week with another superintendent that shared her whole plan and all the things that helped us with this. So just to give you some reassurance, our relationships and the way Wayne County works is very collaborative, so.
Thank you.
Dr. Maleko and Mr. Sealy, I have no doubt about that. But the fact that I'm raising it is to make sure that there's a record that I believe so. And that if any thing should occur in the future, that we, that someone is able to guarantee that there is at least due process, whatever due process means for our student, that at least there is some consultation and consideration.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lane.
Thank you.
You had a question, trustee Lane, regarding number five?
Yeah, we approved some painting and then we tacked on to that further monies. And I want to ask, is there something that's being foreseen for an emergency painting? I mean, it's just seems like an odd thing to be started already. I anticipated that with people being out of the building, that a lot of the work that we anticipate that's normally done in the summer could be completed more timely than ever. So when I saw that there was this emergency request, I wondered if there's any reason for anticipating it.
Maleko, did you want to come?
Yeah, Tom, yeah, come on up. Sorry, I thought you saw me wait. You saw me.
When we actually budgeted the painting to begin with, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we knew that schools were closed, so we did an estimated amount. We were very cautious in that amount because of our state aid. We were unknown what our state aid was at the time we awarded this contract. Now that we know our state aid, we have looked at expanding that program because schools are closed. So that's the reason the number was small to begin with because we were very cautious on how much money we had available for those kind of projects.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on any of the action items? Okay, hearing none and seeing none. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Lane, yes. McDonald?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Mosib?
Yes.
Petchikoff?
Yeah.
Thorpe?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes, the motion is approved unanimously. Madam Secretary, can we have the summary of the agenda action items, please?
I will read them right now. Summary of agenda action items. Number one, approval of warrants. Approval of contract to Edgenuity, Inc. Number three, approval of cooperative agreement with Windot schools per Board Report 20-24. Number four, approval of contract to Data Image Systems, Inc. Number five, approval of contract to Great Lakes Environmental, Inc. Number six, approval of contract to Ecker Mechanical. Number seven, approval of contract to ALC and Trinity Transport, numbers eight through 11, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P12. Number 12, approval of financial statements. Number 13, approval of 2021 superintendent goals. Number 14, approval of donation. Number 15, approval of meeting... approval of meeting of the Board of Education on October twenty-sixth, virtually and in person at Tenac at seven o'clock PM.
And, and the, did we, that was the motion, both, both, both months, Trustee Lane?
Uh, oh, okay, so there were, so it was approval of the meeting.
November twenty-third also.
November twenty-third.
Oh, and November twenty-third also in virtual and in person at seven o'clock PM.
Okay, great, thank you.
And uh, to continue learning labs.
I make a motion that we extend the meeting fifteen minutes.
So we need to extend.
Motion?
It's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow. I was wondering what the heck you said. So we have a motion on the table. Is it support?
Support.
Motion, support, uh, I'll call the, uh, Trustee Lane?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Hopefully it's the last one, Dr. Mead. Your vote?
Oh, I thought he went to bed.
He's still with us.
Say yes.
Yes. Trustee Mosib?
Yes.
Trustee Petchikoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yeah.
Usain Berry, yes. Motion carries, will continue, will continue with the next item, Madam Secretary.
Okay. Uh, no discussion items, thankfully. Next item is Board of Education Business, acknowledgement of correspondence.
Yeah, we got a lot of correspondence.
We sure did. And I spoke about that earlier, all the emails that we got. So anything else?
No.
Okay, next item.
Uh, Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
Trustee Thorpe?
The Finance Committee met before this meeting. We went over several items. Main uh, items were talking about updated budgets, now that we've gotten more information from the state, uh, the fact that we're going to have CARES funds that are going to be distributed at us and uh, some things we might do with that. Uh, also, the annual audit, uh, we are extended to December first to get that done. So the Audit Committee will be meeting in November uh, to go into more detail. That's it.
Great, thank you. I don't think there's any other reports. So next item?
Board Member Superintendent Commentary.
Next item? Oh, sorry, Trustee McDonald?
I've, I've got something. Uh, yeah, for a board commentary, I just want to say that I'm very heartened uh, to hear that all across the country, young people have been stepping up to work the polls on Election Day. Historically, uh, our older citizens have taken that role. And at this time during COVID, it's, it can be very risky to their health. So I just think that it's wonderful that our young folks have done that. But um, Dearborn still does have a need for election poll workers um, on the day of election. The pay is three hundred dollars on Election Day, but there's also paid training the week before Election Day. Um, safety cut precautions will all be taken in effect and P E P E will be provided. I urge anybody that's able to and interested to please go to the City of Dearborn website. Um, there's application and further information, but it's very important that we protect our older citizens and we also make sure that voting takes place um, expeditionally in a safe manner. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, Trustee Thorpe?
Trustee Mosib, are you going to comment at all on the census?
Um, sure, but, Trustee, so go ahead quickly.
Uh, several times in the comments, people uh, brought up that we're going into the flu season. So I think this might be the first time in ten years that personally I will go out and get a flu shot because there's so much else at stake. So please, take the time for everybody, get in somewhere, get the flu shot, so it's one less thing that you have to worry about.
Great, thank you. Trustee Mosib?
I'd like to also uh, mention about the census that it has been extended until the end of the month. So if you have not filled out the census, please go ahead and do that. Millions of dollars get decided based on your answer. I'd like to congratulate also the Teacher of the Year awardees, um, Ms. Sims, um, Mr. Peachey, Mr. Taylor, and Mr. Hawkins. Um, I was honored to be here on behalf of the Board to uh, be in the, the presentation of the awards uh, with the teachers. And we, I congratulate also all of the nominees. Um, Dr. Maleko, I believe student council applications are due this Friday? And that's what I'm hearing, but.
Yes, Dr. Swedan is coordinating it, um.
So if, if you're a student in high school and you would like to uh, be included in that council, make sure that you can.
The Advisory Council?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Superintendent's Advisory Council, yeah. We, we delayed, it got delayed a little with Ms. Charles not being around.
This should have been in uh, commendations, but that's a Ford High School soccer team had amazing season this year. So I'd like to congratulate all of the players and their coach, uh, Coach Baydune for, for the amazing season they've had. Um, and today, I believe, is Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, and I'd like to recognize that as well. So those are the things that I have.
Great, thank you. Dr. Maleko?
Just a question for the next meeting. Um, would we want to run it more like a study session agenda? Or do you want it more like a, our team talked about it and that's how, you know, it was done before? And that way you can, we can really focus on the issue. And then we could put limited action items if something's needed, if that, with the reports, if that's okay?
Would anybody have a problem with that?
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. My, my team and I discussed it after you had mentioned to me, so we were.
Would that include like some of the reports that?
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, the next item, Madam Secretary?
Thank you.
For information and our future agenda items.
I know Trustee Lane asked for one already, so I know you were taking notes, so.
Yes.
Are there any others? Trustee Petchikoff?
Yeah, I, it's just something that I had sent to everybody last weekend about um, room air purifiers. Um, could we get an answer at least back about whether they're feasible, practical, whether we can even purchase any for those rooms in the, in the um, older buildings that uh, don't have good airflow? If we do um, return to the classroom and uh, can't open up windows in certain buildings, maybe we want to consider some of those CARES funds, um, going towards purchases of those and see how um, applicable that would be.
Okay. Anybody else?
I think we already asked about the reports that we would like to see in our next meetings.
Okay.
Dr. Maleko, I think you already have.
If anything comes up, please reach out to me and I'll reach out to Dr. Maleko. Okay, next item, please.
Future virtual and in-person meeting dates. Monday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty, HFC meeting, seven o'clock via video conference. Details will be determined. Check online at www.hfcc.edu forward slash board hyphen meeting hyphen schedule. Monday, October twenty-sixth, uh, Board Study Session Meeting, seven o'clock PM via video conference and in-person. Check DearbornSchools.org for further details. Monday, November ninth, twenty twenty, P twelve Board of Education Meeting, seven PM at the Administrative Services Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. And virtually available live for viewing via YouTube on www.youtube.com/VPSComDepartment, Facebook Live, www.facebook.com, Dearborn Public Schools, and cable channel Comcast Dearborn nineteen and WOW Channel fifteen.
Great, thank you very much. We are adjourned.